I did not.
I am good. Again, I have my calendar. For Thursday, so I wanted everyone to be. Eight thirty.
Okay.
Do you have one class here this summer?
Hey, what's up? How you doing?
Well, you?
Good.
Good.
That's just.
Yeah.
You're eating, you know, and not very good.
What do they have for my evaluation?
What are they going to do? No. Oh, I think that would been, that's why you're talking to the idiot. Every day, everybody.
You have Steve's number. How many family members do we have in the room?
Uh, just three, I think.
Oh, okay. That was always good.
Oh, yeah, no, ignore that.
There you go. Okay, so it's just our summer. All right. Thank you.
It's six o'clock. How about we start with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the representative of its lands. And my nation grew up in this all, you're being a less than.
Thank you all for being here on a beautiful summer night. I know some committee chairs weren't able to be here, but we appreciate your, your being here. Um, I will make an adjustment to the agenda so that the select board policy review gets bumped later and people don't have to sit through that tedium. Um, are there any other adjustments people want to make to the agenda? Any conflicts of interest, anyone? No, minutes of the last meeting. Do people have a chance to review those? And send Judy any changes? All right, I'll move. We approve those. Okay, all in favor? That's four out of five of us. Steve not being here at the moment. Um, communications. We had a couple of communications from Veronica Carlson that we'll discuss later in the town manager's report. Were there any other communications?
I had one this morning. I had a resident come to me. Uh, they were down squid fishing at the new landing and they were concerned that there's no lights on any of the floats. It's just pitch black down the ramp and docks and the commercial. Because commercial end is no lights. I mean, the parking lot's lit up, but there's nothing facing the water. And he said it was
Dave or Carol, do you?
Dangerous in the dark.
Do you have any thoughts?
I believe that the reasoning behind that was through he said lighting um to not affect anybody on the island.
Right. I figured that was the reason. I just they came to me and talked.
I can have Ryan look into at least like very low lights to at least illuminate your footing, you know, on the ramp and on the dock.
Or reflector.
There's a lot of trip there behind those lights, everything behind the lights, so.
I will, uh, Ryan and I will uh take a look and see what we can call.
And the commercial dock not having lights doesn't make much sense. Folks coming in.
Uh, he has already worked on getting more light on the commercial dock. We're just waiting for um electricians, so.
All right, thank you. Any other communications?
I had several comments about the website. They don't like it. It's too hard to navigate. You can't find things. If you don't have anything that's an eye product, if it's an Android, it doesn't seem to want to work with the website. And I've had that problem. I have an Android and it doesn't want to load right.
From phones, is that what you mean?
Well, I have a, my tablet and these people have phones or tablets or and they don't seem to be loading. And then several comments about drift end and the ramp.
Okay, go ahead.
If um, they said the railing is too high, especially if kids are going down the ramp. And when it has sand on it, if you have any type of shoe on it, oh, it's just like walking on marbles. It's just it's just like you just slide down the ramp.
So there's, there's a lower railing. There's a high railing and then there's a lower railing for kids. And then across the ramp, there are the sort of slats of wood so that you don't slide that you can step.
You don't slide too far.
Slide as far, okay.
I'm gonna make a comment. Um, David McDonald, Paul Field Road. Um, we have a lot of friends who um here before, before the storm were able to access the beach. And now with the ramp, which was helpful. Um, they can't walk down that ramp without having a lot of help. Ramp is very steep. It's not the end of the ramp is not ending at a point where it's safe for them getting off the ramp. There are rocks there. They're unstable. And they don't go to the beach anymore. Because the ramp is not accessible wearing to them. So um, it's not about sand. It's about the ramp itself and the way that it's hitched and ending down on the beach.
Yeah, and so we this, that, that concern about there being rocks on the beach has come up in several new days and the ramp ends where the normal high tides don't reach, you know, we can't have it um with it not being a permanent ramp, uh, you know, we can't really have it hit by good times. I, you know, I think if at any point folks feel like the ramp is making it harder to access the beach, I would happily remove it. It doesn't take any.
I'm saying that these people would like that says to be the ramp is not providing them that ability without having two and three people help them across the ramp and down across those rocks.
But if you saw when the ramp first went in last summer, there were hundreds of comments in people very pleased to have the ramp go in. And, and it is, you know, complicated because mother nature changes what the ramp lands on.
I will say, I mean, the rampers said before the storm, people navigated down there without a ramp, right? So
Absolutely.
But I know you tried. I'm just saying the reality is, I mean, I can give you plenty of names and people and, you know, they can't, they can't enjoy beach anymore.
I know, and I, it is a shame that the, the storm limited access to the beach. The ramp was never a permanent uh solution, right? We have work to do on Driftin Road and with that work, our plan was to build in uh, you know, in, in access point to the beach in that plan. Those plans are taking much longer. They, it was originally funded by a great, a bridge grant that got cut at the uh earlier in the year. And so it was not funded in uh the budget or next year's budget because it had grant money attached to it, which means our ability to, to do it unless we find another grant uh in the meantime is, is delayed a bit. And so uh that's, you know, ideally the ramp wasn't ever going to be there this summer, you know, that we would have been able to complete the work and that had some access. So I do understand the frustration. It was built in the middle of last season with the expectation that it would be temporary and would not see, you know, years of use, so.
Well, after the next storm, it'll all change anyway, so.
Right. If we'll make something different.
I'm sure, but that's really an answer, right? After the next storm will change anyway, so whatever. I mean, th- these are people who have, you know, lived here and summered here their whole lives. And now they can't without the aid of a lot of people be basically carried across at the end of that ramp.
So thank you for your comments and will um as Brandon said, you know, do our best. We'll be doing our best.
Um, Jeremy, do you have? Maybe after this, you can give me like outline some like really specific concerns about the website. That way I can have Dale follow up with our, our host and see if anything can be improved.
Yeah, I was thinking that. Wouldn't it make sense? Um, so the warrants for expenditures. The first one is shows um payroll and a number of other dispersments. Did people have any questions? I had a question about the main water charge at the harbor. Seven hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-six cents. What are we paying main water for down there?
This is water at Port Clyde Landing.
So, okay, so it's the water use. And it's probably getting paid to the Port Clyde um Water District?
Yeah, there was uh an original hookup fee. And then there is a flat rate um every month plus the usage rate on top of that.
And main water does their billing.
Right. Okay, thank you. Did people have any other questions about the warrant? Um, so then we will approve the um dispersments in the amount of one million two hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars that are on this warrant. And we can sign that for you, Irene.
And the five hundred thousand dollars is basically just um some upfront money that the Ten Cold Storage Road needs on their warrant. Because there's not enough money in their account.
Is that still coming from the grant?
We have to pay the bill upfront and then we get reimbursed from the grant. Uh, when Rick was here, we were getting reimbursed within a matter of two months. Um, it took Brandon and I almost six months to get the money last time.
The problem with this last reimbursement request is that once you reach a certain percentage of the job, uh, your next reimbursement has to be your final one. So we have to wait for every expense to come in, um, which is why, you know, we have to sort of front it. A, a pretty large sum.
Once, once the project is, you can only get reimbursed for ninety percent of the project. The remaining ten percent, you have to wait until you, every bill has come in and then you could submit that last ten percent.
Eventually it works.
Eventually it works. It's just the timing was not great.
So the Cold Storage Road summary. It these aren't amounts going out right now.
Yes, they are.
Okay, it is. So that's what you're talking about that.
Eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents is going out now. But there was not enough money in that bond account to pay for it.
Right.
Had to essentially move five hundred thousand dollars from the general fund account into that account
Right.
to be able to cover those for now. And once the grant reimbursement comes in, the general fund will get reimbursed.
So we're not authorizing a separate eight hundred and twenty-five thousand out of the general fund. It's coming out of the bond and five hundred of it is coming from the general fund.
I, I've simply moved five hundred thousand from the general fund into the bond.
Right. Everybody.
That request for Cold Storage is higher than it should be. Our project manager submitted uh an inaccurate invoice, so it didn't get paid. It was, could it be at the wrong amount in there? So one of these invoices of, you know, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is from work um that happened right before the sort of winter shutdown that never got paid um because we never got an invoice.
Interesting to be able to overlook collecting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But anyway, um so do we have public comments from anybody present or online? Um, other than things we're going to be talking about on the agenda tonight? No? All right. Um, the abatement.
Uh, so we have um an abatement request from um this Lorschreider. Essentially, uh we had been taxing her on the wrong acreage plus uh the building that we were taxing her on. Uh, she submitted the video to show that it is in disrepair and not adding any value anymore. And so um Jackie worked through it and put together an abatement to adjust um the valuation of the property.
So the original taxable value was a hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred. And Jackie's new value is this, a hundred and forty-four thousand two hundred. So the abatement is for three hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. So I'll make a motion that we um approve this abatement.
Second.
All in favor? That's all five of us. The record can show that Steve has arrived. Um.
Always hard, as they say in French.
All right.
Summer amnesia.
Um, so the next thing on the agenda is to talk about the role of town committees. And I know um some of the committee chairs who are here tonight have been committee chairs for a long time and may feel like this is, you want to pull up the PowerPoint? Um, may feel like this is like, you know, uh kindergarten of committee um roles and responsibilities, but some of our committees are newer and some of our committee chairs are newer and haven't um been doing this. And also some of our newer staff felt like it would be helpful to them to be clear on the role of um the committee to town staff. And so um the purpose of this is for us to all be on the same page, so you can go to the next slide. This was just, so um little civics introduction. Our town has chosen the town meeting, select board, town manager form of government. So um, the relationships and our responsibilities are all governed by state law and the town charter. Um, those are, the town charter is a local law passed by the voters. Um, and the select board operates as the um executives for the town, mostly dealing with policy matters. And then delegating to the town manager and his staff the day-to-day responsibility of running the town. And he's the one responsible for supervising all of the town staff. Not the select board or committees. Um, under our town charter, all of the committees are advisory to the select board. With the exception of the Board of Appeals that acts as judges. The Planning Board, when they're acting as judges, interpreting our land use ordinance. Although sometimes they wear a different hat that is advisory to the select board when they're making recommendations about proposed changes to land use ordinances and things. And also um the school committee, um, which is the school board, is obviously not advisory to um the select board. So those are the exceptions. And this is um the chart. There is a chart like this on the website, although um I modified it a little bit to add some things, but so you can see, you know, it's the town voters and the town charter that govern everything. The select board, the committees are up to the right. And then it goes, flows down, you know, for us to Brandon to, you know, those folks.
Democracy in action.
Right. So in the town charter, these are the committees that were created um by the voters, the Budget Committee, Board of Appeals, Comprehensive Plan, Conservation Commission, the Harbor Committee, the Planning Board, the School Committee, and Solid Waste and Recycling. And then um since the town charter, there have been additional committees created by the select board, the Cemetery Committee, Emergency Services, which was created last year and now folded in the um Emergency Plan Committee, Parks and Rec, um Resilience, which is at the moment an ad hoc committee because it wasn't in the town charter, but at some point we will update the town charter and some of these might become permanent committees, which would make sense for the cemetery, for example. Because the cemetery wasn't owned by the town when the town charter was last updated. Well, that's not true actually, but anyway, they, that didn't happen then. And then there's a scholarship committee that's, you know, very temporary to provide scholarships to students in the spring. Um, and then we have occasional um ad hoc committees like the TIF Committee that are given an assignment that's time limited. And so they meet for a period. There was a Traffic and Safety Ad Hoc Committee, and then when their job is done, you know, that they shut down. Um, all of the committees have to follow the policies and procedures that are in the town charter and the Select Board Policy Manual. Um, and and really, if you ever have questions about how you should be doing things, if you look at the town charter, all the answers are in there. Um, but you can always check with Brandon or um your select board liaison or me if you have questions. So just so that people are, you know, remembering the advisory role to the select board, you know, like the, the Budget Committee works, the town manager proposes his budget in the past entirely on his own, but in this, more recently, Brandon's chosen to do that along with the Budget Committee. Then they bring the budget to the select board and once it's approved, it's submitted to the voters for their approval. And so um that's one example of the advice a committee, you know, gives a select board. The Harbor Committee spent years um working on all the policies and recommendations for how the Port Clyde Landing would run that they brought to the select board. Um the Cemetery Committee is, I know, working on new policies and procedures for the cemetery. Um and the transfer station had recommendations about doing away with some fees. I mean, one example of things that only the select board can decide usually are things that involve charging people. So like um, and even the public, the voters of the town had to give the select board the authority to charge the user fees for the Port Clyde Landing. Otherwise, things that were charging like for graves at the cemetery, we would have to ask the voters at a town meeting, what do you think we should charge? And so we, to avoid that kind of um being in the weeds by the voters, we asked the voters to authorize the select board to set the fees for the Port Clyde Landing use and for the cemetery. Um, so when you have recommendations about those things, you bring them here and then you know, almost always your recommendation will be adopted, but obviously, these are the people that are elected to decide. It's possible this group would have a different judgment than what a committee recommended. Um, wait, you went too fast for me. So, and of course, the Comprehensive Plan is an example or um the open space plan that's, you know, different zoning considerations um that the Planning Board might have or the Conservation Commission. Those get brought to the select board. So um and we did, I think some of you know, but maybe not everyone, the state just recently approved the Comprehensive Plan that um the committee's been working on for two years. And in this fall, we'll all be voting on it. There'll be a public hearing and then we'll be voting on it. Um, and so it's, it will be ultimately the responsibility of the select board, but all of you too, to implement what's in there. Um and we do have um a tool to help you track the things that your committee's supposed to work on um and, and timing. But that's just a heads up for in your futures, advancing the goals in the Comprehensive Plan. So um, here's where the staff issue came up because some of our committees, um Resilience and um Conservation have no staff people that do that work. So we have a committee that's maintaining town trails. That if we were a bigger town with a bigger tax base, it would not be all volunteers, you know, deciding which trails to recommending which trails to wire and then raising, writing grants to, you know, come up with the money and then doing the work to maintain. But, so for those committees that have no um staff person, it's especially important that your select board liaison know you know, everything you're working on, that it does match with the select board policies for your um committee. And I think both of those committees are doing a great job of coming to the select board. Um but and, and because every committee is different, it gets more complicated. So you know, emergency services, obviously, there are a lot of employees doing that work at the town and they regularly attend those committee meetings. Um, Parks and Rec has Ashley, you know, doing that work on a day-to-day basis. Um, Brian Klein, Irene, Dawn, you know, these are the staff people doing work. But it's important for you all to remember that they're getting their marching orders of what they're supposed to be doing from Brandon. And you as a committee really helping us and you know, with policy issues primarily, not, obviously, you know, when you have a project like Port Clyde Landing Development, you know, the staff person, Harbor Master and the Har- Harbor Committee are working very closely together. But um it was just um stressed, shall we say, that um committee members and select board members should not be telling staff what to do. I mean, obviously, they're a resource to us. You know, you can say to Terry Brackett, I need this information from you, or Irene, I need this information, or you know, what are the plans about this tournament or whatever, but um so I know it's, can be challenging and if people um have questions about that, you can ask.
And part of, you know, that is part of why I'm here as well, right? So, you know, if you need something from the staff, reach out and I will make sure that whoever uh is available based on capacity at that moment can get it for you rather than just assuming that it's going to be, you know, um, the person that you would uh at first reach out to.
And remembering that the day-to-day operation of the town is Brandon and the staff. So things even like the ramp at the Drifting Beach, you know, that's a staff thing. He's the road commissioner. So if there are issues related to um you know, something at a road that doesn't, wouldn't be coming to the select board, uh except in a rare case. So we talked about that. And also budgeting, um, as I mentioned, the budget process really starts with the town manager and the budget committee. And if you um are aware of policies that you want, you know, that have been made, you know, we are providing this service and we need some new piece of equipment or whatever that will help advance the goals of your committee, you are welcome to um let Brandon know that you know, we'd like to see something in the budget to um, but he's really working with his staff about budgeting. Um and in general, the committees um are not, don't really have a role in planning the budget or spending the budget um for departments of the town. So this is where we all share. So this is where we all share this important, um, responsibility, the freedom of access to information. And it's hard for me because I'm so used to FOIA. But we are all required to, um, provide transparency. We're doing the people's work and, um, the public has a right to know what we're doing. So whenever you have basically more than two people of your committee are meeting, um, it has to be more than two, more, you really, it's a quorum, but to be safe. Go with more than two people. The meeting has to be held in public and it has to be on the town calendar before it happens. And main law does not require an agenda for our meeting, your meetings. Um, although the select board pa- policy manual says worse, you should be, um, creating an agenda. But even if what you're doing is, um, you have three bullet points, or if this is what we're talking about tonight. I know, like the planning board obviously, um, does always post an agenda, but if, if you can post an agenda, um, Phil Batty will put it on there, just even if it's three bullet points. These are the things we're covering at our meeting on Tuesday at five o'clock.
All this information as well, agendas, minutes, meeting time and place can go straight to Phil Batty. You don't need to reach out to me first for that, you know, that is very routine and required and so.
And, um, minutes are required to be taken and posted for every meeting, including workshops. Which I, we realized this, um, during the comprehensive plan process. That group had so many workshops of smaller groups and it wasn't till we'd had a few that I realized we should be, which, you know, minutes don't have to be some long forty-five page word-by-word transcript like we have. They can be a little summary. We talked about this, these concerns were raised, this was a decision that was made, Gary, you know. Um, but again, the public is entitled to know what we're doing. And so that's why, um, these requirements are there. And this is maybe the hardest one of all, trying not to deliberate on email. Um, because all of us in our other lives, um, at work or with friends, you know, if somebody says, well, here's this idea and somebody says, well, I don't like it, I think we should do this instead, we cannot do that. So you, what you are allowed to do is say, these things are going to be on the agenda. These, he- here's some attachments we're going to be reviewing. You can share things that you're going to talk about in public. And then you talk about them in public and summarize them in the minutes. Um, but you should not, and if you're a committee chair and they start doing it, oh, I don't like that idea, or we should change this sentence. You know, timeout, just say, you know, flag that for discussion at the meeting and.
Um, so sharing information, like a document.
Yep.
That also should be known to be public and should be available through the town office as well.
That's right. And this is something we've been talking about here that, um, in an ideal world, attached to the agenda on a website, you know, for, at least for the select board, I'll talk about us. You know, we would have attachments of any documents that we're going to be reviewing tonight, so other people could also look ahead of time and say, oh, I want to go to that meeting because they're going to talk about something. But at the very least, after the fact, if documents were reviewed, they should be attached to the minutes or some, you know, whatever mechanism you want to create, but it's important for, um, people, yeah, Dawn.
I just want to clarify that in an email, we can say, um, we're going to share this document at our meeting. So we can like, you know, this is going to happen at our meeting and then that's okay.
Yes.
To do that in an email.
Yes.
Make sure that it gets on the agenda.
That's correct.
Just not to really discuss it.
Right. What the law prohibits is discussion and deliberation. So, um, you know, obviously, people, if people don't get their homework ahead of time, you don't make as good a decisions as the first minute you ever heard about something is when you sat down. So it's reasonable to share information. This is what we'll be talking about. But just don't let it go into a bunch of back and forth about my idea is this and his idea is that and. And, um, so, and obviously you all know, you have a select board liaison. Every committee has a liaison. Each of us has, I think, three committees that we're, um, supporting and a link um, between the committees and the full board. And so your liaison should also be getting, you know, whatever background documents you're providing. So really, every email that the chair sends to the committee should also go to the liaison, so they know what's going to be coming up. And they will help you follow these rules. Um, and you know, the, the five of us, because of the frequency with which we talk about all kinds of things, might have a better sense about what's going to fly that your committee's talking about. So there definitely have been times when I've been at committee meeting where people are saying, well, I think we should go in this direction. And I'll say, well, you can bring that to the select board, but I'm not sure they're going to want to adopt that for, you know, whatever reasons. But, so it is a two-way street, the relationship with the liaison. Do any other select board members have things they want to say about these important committees?
We love them all.
That's right. Well, it's always amazing because we really, we have, I don't know, about ten, ten or twelve committees and boards and about a hundred volunteers that are serving on all these committees and doing a lot of work. And, um, a lot of work that is saving the taxpayers money. Because just like I said, the conservation commission, if they weren't doing all that or everything the harbor committee did on the Port Clyde landing. Um, I mean, we have one finance person, but we have these, you know, subject matter experts from our community helping, um, we would not get all these things done for the community. So thank you. So do you have any other questions or particularly like the staff relationship that Brandon could answer for you? Yeah, Suzie.
Just a quick question, who's in meeting, meeting minutes.
Right.
Um, is there a timeframe as to when they're supposed to be, um?
There is, and we aren't exactly any of us following. I mean, they, obviously, they can't get posted until they've been approved by your committee. So usually at your, you know, in an ideal world, your secretary will circulate them within, you know, maybe a week of them when the meeting happened. And then they'll be approved at the next meeting. But sometimes, like the budget committee sometimes goes several months without meeting. So we actually sometimes post draft minutes so that the public could see at the last meeting, which was three months ago, this was the work of that committee, but it's a draft.
Because you can't, um, you can't approve minutes on email, you have to do.
That's right.
Live.
And you, and you should not be, yeah, right.
That was a big.
You can't, you can't make any deci- you can't make any decisions by email, no decisions other than, um, when you're going to meet and what's on the agenda. Those are the only things. So, you know, you can, you can send suggested changes, but they should be for the minutes. But then you should talk about them at your minute meeting unless, you know, some, so if somebody said, well, I didn't say that, you know. Yeah, and the cemetery committee I know is the, our newest committee, and so you guys are getting the hang of it, which is partly why I wanted to go through everything, um, because we all, we always have new people on every committee.
Oh, I agree. Yeah, we're learning every time we have a meeting and, you know, a lot of us are new to the committee. You know, completely, so it's.
Right. Yeah, we am.
So, we're out of whack on the planning board because we're, we didn't have an agenda item other than minutes for our meeting tomorrow, so we canceled the meeting tomorrow. So we've got, you know, a backlog of minutes. We'll deal with them, but are you saying that we should put the draft?
No, because you're not, it's going to be before like three months or something. You're meeting soon.
Well, i- in the perfect world, maybe not, but no.
Three months. No, I re- I really think it's only if a committee hasn't met for an extended period. But, and the fact that something was not an agenda, but something comes up, you know, because main law does not require an agenda, doesn't mean that you're, you can talk about things that weren't on the agenda.
Summer has a question.
Oh, yeah, Summer.
Hey, um, so I was, my question was about committee size. Um, there was some confusion in our last, um, rec, Parks and Rec meeting, kind of going over some of these new rules. You know, we've had a committee never under five since I've been on it almost ten years. Um, and it was kind of bothersome to me to think that we would actually have to have people become non-voters who have been with us for a long time.
Well, your committee is seven. That when it was created in the select board policy manual, they put seven. I have no idea why that was since all the other committees are five people with two alternates. Um, except the conservation commission has a statutory, um, number and different kinds of members. They have associate members and alternate members. But seven is the, um, the number. You don't have more than seven, do you?
Now we have seven, but in the past, we've had, we've had more, I think up to ten.
So, um, you know, it, well, and another thing that's worth pointing out is that, um, people can, can come and weigh in and be meaningful participants at committee meetings without being a voting member. You know, you have to be a full-time resident to be a voting member. So for example, we have two oceanographers who come to the resilience committee and provide advice, but because they don't live here, they can't vote. But, so, I don't know how, you know, it's not even that often other than minutes and things, you're even voting, right? I mean, you're basically.
We vote a lot.
Do you?
In rec, yes. Um, so I guess my question and concern is moving forward. You know, we had people trying to say, oh, you know, I guess I could be an alternate, which I don't think is fair. They've been on the committee for several years. Is going forward, we have seven, we're not looking for anymore now, obviously. Can those seven still be voting members?
Yes, that's what the select board policy that created your committee put down was seven.
Can they have alternates also?
I'd have to look at that.
There's two.
Two alternates.
Nine.
That's what Ashley said, two alternates. But she thought we were only allowed to have five with two alternates.
Well, that because that's everybody else and who knows.
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, honestly, I will say for the rec committee, we need seven. I mean, we, we, we do so much with so much hands-on, um, that I can't imagine trying to pull off what we do with five. So at this point, we're at seven, I think that's a good number and I will relay that they can all still continue to be voting members. That was that was a part of that question.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was part of the rec director, rec program a long time ago, and the reason that seven came up was because there were seven people that wanted to be on it at the time.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's as good a reason as any, right?
There was not a whole lot of, um, kickback against that.
Okay. And again, for the rec committee with the hands-on stuff we do, we need, we need more than five. So I think that that's a important part of it.
All right, well, if you don't have any other questions, you don't have to stay here unless you're eager to hear the other things we're going to talk about. Thank you very much for coming.
I've sent up into our town.
I know, we're so lucky. Good night. Bye, Ray.
Thank you, people.
Thanks. The whole family.
Yeah.
Right. I know, I shouldn't mention that anybody, um, related to Brandon is supervised by Tara, but I think we, we all know that. But it would have been smart to say it.
Did a good job.
So, um, the select board members are aware of, um, an email we received from Veronica Carlson about, um, the temporary positioning of a food truck at, um, the Port Clyde landing and I'll let Brandon talk about, um.
Well, Veronica asked that her email be read because she can't be here.
Well, that's right. You want me to read it?
That'd be great.
All right, so this, this is what Veronica's email said that she sent to me and Brandon and I forwarded to the rest of you. Driving past the food truck today, I noticed, I'll give you this, Tony. I noticed a sign indicating it would be closed for two weeks and reopening on August fourteenth at the Port Clyde public landing. I asked Ryan whether this was just for the concert series or something longer term. And he mentioned that he believed the truck would be located there through September. He suggested I reach out to you directly for confirmation. I want to be clear that this is not an attack on Mike personally. I've spoken him with directly and he understands that my concern is not about him or his food truck specifically. The issue is about the use of town-managed and federally funded marine property. A public landing created and maintained to support marine-related activity, including access for fishermen, boaters and related commercial and recreational waterfront use. This concern is especially important given that the town landing is newly constructed and not yet fully completed. It was built using approximately three point eight five million in federal funds through the US Economic Development Administration under the American Rescue Plan with a local match of about nine hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. According to public documents and press coverage, the project was funded specifically to strengthen Port Clyde's working waterfront, increase capacity for commercial and recreational vessels and enhance water-dependent infrastructure. Bringing a food truck onto the site raises serious questions about whether such a use complies with the intended purpose of this grant-funded property. From what I understand, and again, I'm reading from what Veronica's written us. From what I understand, the food truck is being placed on the new concrete pad, which was specifically constructed for commercial fishing operations, not for general retail activity. This is not simply a matter of using a parking space. The landing is a public asset meant to serve the marine economy and provide water access to commercial operators, lobstermen and the public. The introduction of a land-based food vendor unrelated to marine use appears inconsistent with the project's scope and may not meet federal post-award use requirements for EDA-funded infrastructure. The approved use of the property was clearly defined in the grant application and presented publicly in the press release and other materials at the time. It was voted on by the town and never brought back for reconsideration or change. I supported that original purpose and provided lever, letters from the local businesses I represent in support of the project. I continue to support the public landing and believe it's a vital community asset, but one that must be managed in line with the specific commitments made to secure federal funding. I recognize that the new landing is going through its growing pains. That's expected with any sub-significant public investment. But I believe it's important that the town continues to review what uses are truly allowed on the site under the federal grant terms and remain in compliance with the intent of the funding. In addition to these broader concerns, the presence of a food truck also creates an unfair situation for local businesses that are operating year-round, investing in brick and mortar locations, paying property taxes and covering all their own expenses, including trash reme- Paying property taxes and covering all their own expenses, including trash removal and utilities. When we applied for our food trucks, we were required to go before the planning board. And receive thorough and appropriate scrutiny. In this case, the use of subsidized public land for a business that did not follow the same review process. Only adds to the frustration. If this were something like a floating burger bar accessed from the wharf. I could better understand it as a marine-related business concept. But placing a land-based food truck directly on infrastructure designed and funded. To serve the fishing industry and marine economy does not align with the intended purpose of the property. What feels most frustrating is the lack of public discussion or notification. A decision of this nature, one that directly affects the waterfront and surrounding businesses. Should have involved input from the local community and a transparent review process. I hope this perspective helps clarify where I'm coming from. It's my complete understanding that the public landing was approved, funded, and developed for marine-related purposes. Consistent with the federal grant requirements and public process that supported it. If any part of that understanding is incorrect, I would appreciate your clarification. I also hope that moving forward. Any decisions regarding shared public assets involve better communication with those most directly impacted. So when we got, when I got this email. I, um, told Veronica that we would be discussing this tonight. Um, and. You know, just so that all of you know, and it's too bad I didn't ask Dave to stay, um. One of the primary purposes of the landing renovations was, um. Economic development in jobs and.
I have a lot of the specifics, if you would like to clarify some of the things. Um, first off, Veronica mentioned that, uh, the food truck would be there until the end of September. That was incorrect, the original plan was for. Uh, the concert fundraiser and then two weeks, uh, following that, so this was a two-week operation, not, um. The length that she, uh, implied. Uh, furthermore, I should add, uh, Mike is no longer interested in bringing the food truck down. He said it's not worth. Um, the hassle that has been caused, um, by the idea of it. Um, but nonetheless, we should clarify some of the things that Veronica spelled out, I think, uh, to make sure that we all understand. The, the project accurately. So the EDA scope of work, um. When complete, the project will increase usable space available for commercial use, recreational access, and vehicular circulation. And so the scope of work is what we are bound to, and so, um. There's something in there that is restrictive about it being marine use only, or seafood only, or even, um. You know. Working waterfront only. Uh, it was funded under the American Rescue Plan Act Travel Tourism and Outdoor Recreation Notice of Funding. Uh, and essentially, I have the definitions here, but. These were programs that were designed for, uh, towns whose. Economy was tourism-dependent and were coming out of the pandemic, having been hit by that, so they were. Tourism, uh, driven projects. In the, uh, actual application, um, Veronica started, it does mention recreational boating, commercial fishing, and tourism, though, that part she left out. Um. Furthermore, the application says it is a multi-use public facility that allows for flexibility and adaptation for businesses to pursue economic opportunities. I think that's important because I think that is. Exactly what was being attempted. Now. As for her own permitting that she mentioned, uh, first off, we do not require permitting for food trucks in this town. Whether or not we should is a different question, and I think, you know, I have heard from, um, Rick Rockwell, who. Would like the select board to pursue that, uh, in light of this conversation, whether or not. Were asked the planning board to pursue it, um. But. So she had to, she didn't have to go through any permitting for the Dipnet food truck, that was allowed, uh, as a replacement to the Dipnet restaurant. She had to go for permitting for the other truck at the Barn Cafe because. Uh, it was a change of use for this facility. The Barn Cafe originally only provided, uh, drinks, and so then when you were going to put in. You know, a, a food option, that is a change of use, anytime a business changes its use, it goes through a site plan review, um, under the planning board. The other important distinction is that Veronica's food trucks. They don't move because they are, they have permanent, uh, utility hookups. Therefore, they are much closer to a brick-and-mortar than they are a food truck in its true nature. And then, you know, I think lastly. You know, her piece about how this should have involved, you know, public. Uh, process, I think. Had a. Food truck been permitted for the whole season, I can maybe understand that request, um. But this was two weeks and a lot of what we. Are aiming to do is exactly what the grant outlined in terms of being. Flexible, uh, and that adaptable for businesses to pursue economic, uh, endeavors. We're in a pilot phase right now, so this. Decision came with multiple onsite meetings with myself and the harbor master, um. Reviewing, you know, where it could be set up. Uh, Ryan deemed that on the cement cur commercial dock, which was not new or constructed under grant funds, that was already existing and in place. Be the place that was the most out of the way, rather than a parking spot, parking has been in high demand. And so, um, they were, it was done with intentionality, Michael had asked us if he could set up there all season, uh, before we'd opened, and we said. No, we need to see how the facility is going to be used to learn about that. And so, so anyway, that, I hope clarifies some of the, um.
Well, and also, um. As we were discussing earlier about permit and use fees for the landing, um. We do have a list of permit and use fees for people who want to use the landing. And you had talked to him about. Where he fit.
There's a miscellaneous user category for folks that don't meet the definition of, um. That was outlined by the harbor committee and approved by the select board, um, you know, and part of that arrangement was gonna be. You know, covering, you know, whatever electricity and garbage disposal, uh, you know, he used, and so, you know, all of that was considered, this was not a. Subsidized project, um.
So, and you had discussed charging him according to the. You, that fee structure that we already approved.
Yes.
So you were interpreting a policy of the select board. And that policy, we had authority to adopt from the voters when, um. So just like in our chart earlier, you know, we set the policy and it's Brandon's job to. Run the town day-to-day and he and Ryan. Listen to this request for a temporary food truck, well, first you told him no for a longer one, and then when you felt like it could be there. And you charged him accordingly, you said yes, now unfortunately. Because this is blown up in this way, he, he's not gonna do it, I guess. He's not even coming for the party?
I believe he's, he's still trying to come down for the concert.
I think that would be a big plus.
I know.
But that's a big deal to move that.
Yeah, for one night.
For one night.
It is, which is part of what he said when he, when he asked.
Well, and another thing that Brandon told me, I think it's worth having the public be aware of, you asked. If they wanted to move the Dipnet food truck to the landing closer.
Before I asked, um, yeah.
And that's when she said it's all, you know.
If it can't move, it's got a permanent utility hookup.
So do people have questions?
I don't have many questions, I'm glad you clarified all the things about the federal money and. Basically, there were no strings other than the original. My language in the application that what you said it was gonna be used for. So I'm satisfied that. There's been no malfeasance. There's no true impact on brick-and-mortar businesses.
Well, I mean, even if there were, I'm not sure that competition is prohibited.
Right, no, it's not.
Um.
In the context of federal funds.
Right.
In the context of our ordinances, et cetera.
I think the other piece that's important too is that Ryan and I have been really clear with. All sort of, all of these sort of miscellaneous commercial users, if Summer was still on here, she could confirm that. We're giving priority of the space to commercial fishermen and the working waterfront, um, and if at any point, you know. There was not the, the room or capacity for these other users that, you know, we wouldn't be able to guarantee anything, and so. You know, Ryan only signed off on this because he felt confident that for the two weeks it would not affect the, you know, commercial fishing use.
I hope Mike reconsideres.
Well, this is, and, and, you know, I don't know. I feel like it's unfortunate that her email to us was. Almost two weeks ago, you know, we meet every two weeks and it was a couple days after that, so in a way. Um, the fact that the pot got stirred before we could have Brandon explain all of this. Um, may have led to Mike deciding it was creating a flap on Facebook or in certain groups in town. Before we had a chance to have all this aired, um, so I guess I would just say to you, Brandon, and. You know, we do have meetings. At other times, if it's important to, you know, um. Address rumors or misinformation that's floating around. You know, maybe there's.
Really tricky precedent, I don't necessarily want us to be reactive to town rumor mill, especially when. It's inaccurate, I would much rather see us be responsive to something that actually did come up and was accurate, you know? It, in that case, I'd be like, yeah, all right, we should have a meeting right away, um.
Right, but in general, I don't think we, even if it had been the day of the select board meeting. I don't think we're really involved, it's Brandon.
It is Brandon's job.
His job as town manager. And we would listen to somebody's issues, but. He's the one that acts on disinformation, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. The only concern for me was the fact that we weren't even aware that a food truck was gonna be going in there for a couple of weeks, because I had people ask me about it after. And it's, I had no idea what they were talking about, so it, that was the only concern for me, that something like, anything that happens in Port Clyde seems to. Just explode, so.
Yeah.
Just to know that there was a food truck going in there, oh, it's gonna be there for two weeks, don't worry about it, it's for the concert, we're doing a fundraiser, and then it'll go away.
Well, and this is part of the.
I think especially, you know, your remark about things happening in Port Clyde, tending to be under a sort of brighter light or more of a microscope, but. Because I don't. Necessarily inform you all when things are happening on town, like there's a soccer camp happening at the big ball field.
Well, I ride by and see that, so.
Yeah, well, you eventually would have ridden by and seen the, the food truck at the, the landing.
Well, I don't go to Port Clyde that much, but like I said. Clyde is a hotspot and any little thing that happens down there sends the fire seems to be.
Well, I also think it's because, because the landing is a new, this is a new use, there's some, you know, and. That's, we are in the learning curve of this first year and, um. So, uh, hopefully. Now that we're clear about Brandon's authority with respect to things that go on down there. If, um. You know, people say things to us, then we can say, you know, Brandon will respond.
To the town manager, right. Hey, that's true.
The buck stops later. Yeah. You can't anticipate what's gonna happen sometimes, you know, what, what kind of reaction you get to things, but. Yeah, I mean, I suppose in, in your report, if you knew in advance that. You could mention in your, in your town manager's report that, oh, and by the way, there's also.
Right.
Even though that's your authority, you could let us know.
Right.
Just surely, I mean, I sat down at the dock. You know, uh, with my family a week ago, and I was sitting there. And we were talking about the concert. And, and, and it's one of them asked about the food truck and, oh, yeah, and bringing it down from the grain. Blah, blah, blah. And. And then I'm standing there, I, the elephant in the room, I'm looking at the Dipnet food truck. And I'm realizing the concert's over there, he's parking his food truck over there, and I said, oh. I wonder if that's going to create, you know, an issue. With, you know, uh, Veronica, Lexi, whomever. And. You know, because they can't lift up their truck and move it into the parking lot to be next to the guy who is. The only food truck, um, at the concert. And. I, I, I'm, I, I think you, you're on top of all the issues, I think you're doing a good job on this, I'm just saying. It was apparent to me just sitting there going, yeah, I bet that's gonna be a problem. And no one seemed to know that?
Who, who didn't know that, that's why I approached.
Let me ask you the question, I guess I, I'm hearing that.
I mean, I, I knew it, the harbor master knew it.
Good.
You know, these.
I, I just wanna make sure that you understand that when you make that decision, it's going to affect.
Well, and he did ask her if she wanted to move closer.
I think you have this.
Right. All right, well, thank you for all of that, um, Brandon, and I'm glad we clarified all that. Um, the next discussion item. I, um, shared with all of you, I just happened to read the Maine Municipal Association. Summer, I know, why, but it's a good thing.
Oh, my goodness.
So, you know, I don't know how many bills the legislature passed in this session, but. The Maine Municipal Association had a little paragraph about each one, so I read through them to see if there were things affecting our town. And there's this bill, LD eight, eleven eighty-six. That requires the Department of Transportation. To study the feasibility of, of state ferry service to Monthegan. The bill passed in April, the sponsor was a House Representative from Newcastle. And the report from the DOT is supposed to be ready in December of this year. So, obviously, being concerned about ramifications for our town. I just wanted to make you all aware that I did send a copy of that paragraph to. The Barstows to just say, maybe you were already aware of this, but we were not aware of this, um. They said that they were aware of it. And they've been trying to get a seat at the table to. Participate in the process of this study. Um, it would appear they haven't been successful from what they said in the email, but, um. I thought that maybe Aaron Dent could, um, find out from the DOT where, what's happening with the study. When are the meetings, because obviously they have to be public meetings, we could see what's happening with this, um. Because we would like to know.
I wonder what the motivation was for.
Well.
There's something behind this.
There is.
Yeah, there.
All I can think of is, you know, New Harbor. You know, you've got the Hardy boat that goes out of New Harbor.
Right.
And that is only a seasonal ferry, it's only people.
Right, well, none of these are car, I mean, for the Barstows, and they're not car ferries, so.
Right, but I'm not sure that they're, that the issue is cars as much as another year-round service, but. You know, for an island that has what, a year-round population of what, thirty people or fifty?
It's like forty-five.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, they're struggling in Rockland to have enough ferry operators and. So, the whole thing is a mystery, but.
Right.
Um, we will see what we can find out and we will share that with everyone. Um, so your town managers report, do you, and then we'll do, should, or should we go ahead and do this misery of the select board policies?
No, no, I've been to town.
I think one to leave.
Please, thank you very much.
I spoke with the, a resident came in and shared with me a couple of videos of, um. Some of the activity that's been happening on Wollston Road, um. I shared this with the Sheriff's Department and, uh, had. So, you know, sort of said, you know, I hope that this is enough for you. You know, sort of said, you know, I hope that this is enough for you to. Like put this as a priority on your, um, you know, patrol list and, and, and finally help us reach some sort of resolution. And, um.
Speeding.
Speeding, a lot of burnouts.
The burnout, the tire, the tire burnout.
Uh, yes.
And disturbing the peace.
Yeah, let's drive. And at, and at this point, it's frankly, um. You know, it's, it's destruction of property because that, that amount of excess heat to the road. Uh, weakens the asphalt, which makes it more susceptible to potholes. And that stretch that they've been doing burnouts on would cost two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to resurface. And so. At this point, I would say it's. You know, it's, it's, it's more than just once at a stop sign, you know, um. So anyway, um. Communicate, it was not great. Uh, they were like, well, this happened in the past. We can't do anything with these videos. But they'd asked for videos, so I was confused by that. Um. They encouraged us to. Hire a private detail to come down, um, to do it. Um. I reminded them that we'd pay a million and a half to the county every year, um, for this. And that we don't really have many other issues going on. Um. Acknowledged seeing their presence here in the mornings during weekdays. Um. However, that's not when this is happening and I asked them to just try to. Build some nighttime patrol into the schedule. Also said that they only had. That they didn't have any reports of, uh, anything on Wollston Road this spring or summer. Um, which is frustrating because I've talked to many residents. One resident who even heard from the Sheriff's Department that they should talk to the town. Um, which.
But if you don't call nine-one-one, it's not registered.
Right, exactly. So maybe, maybe folks are filing their complaints via email, which then don't go into their log, detract, so.
Brandon, what, um, what are those tubes that have been across the road? From the, are they speed related or volume related?
Volume.
Okay, all right. Well, what's the difference between a video and private detail taking a video? I mean, if.
No, the detail would be not private, it would be.
Pay them to arrest people?
Yes.
Extra money?
Yeah, we would essentially be paying the overtime rate, um, for an officer.
In addition to our one point five million that we pay him already.
Right.
Yeah.
So I. It was not a great communication, but. I'm gonna give them the benefit of the doubt that if they were going by the call log, that maybe they were not as aware of this being a problem. Even though, you know, we've had town staff talk to deputies, but maybe that didn't get back to the department as a whole. And so. Give them the benefit of the doubt and. Hope that.
When somebody does that, we need to call nine-one-one and say somebody's burning.
Absolutely, absolutely, cause that's the way it's registered.
Which is tough because you feel like nine-one-one's for emergencies.
Right, right, but.
Just stupid.
Yeah, you need to say that it's happening right now. The last time I saw it happening, I, there was no way I could have caught the license plate. Guy sped away so fast.
Well, yeah, I, you wouldn't maybe be able to give any information just that it's happening. I can hear it.
Yeah.
Hold your phone up.
The important thing is if you call, it starts creating a log, you know, and.
Okay. Do we think that would be helpful?
Put that in the newsletter.
To put, I was just gonna say, to put on the website and in the newsletter. That the Sheriff's Department wants to hear from us every time we observe this.
Yeah, or hear it.
Right.
And I'd send out a town alert.
I don't know that you wanna catch them as much as you wanted to have them stopped, right? So the more that you escalate, that people are aware of this and that we're. The town is taking steps and you make that public, maybe that's a deterrent. That causes them to seek. In which case, you know, I, I don't necessarily.
I, I don't think they're deterred. I mean, I think they're thumbing their nose at all of us. I really are. I mean. You know, when you're a certain age and you feel immortal and invincible, you do things like this. And then you get old like me. So, no, I mean, I. I don't know. I don't know what's happening.
I think it's safe to say that there is based on the video.
But the videos, if I was a lawyer representing, if, if somebody was arrested and these videos were taken under non-controlled circumstances. I would make midsmeat of them. So that, I'm sure that's why they're not that, you know, interesting to.
My hope is that it would illustrate that this is more severe than just somebody making a loud noise, right? That there is, you know, a dangerous level of driving happening. You know, there are, you know, there are donuts. That are going across like multiple lanes at an intersection. You know, there are people hanging out of windows with what appear to be alcoholic beverages. You know, people standing in the road, you know, so like. My hope was that the videos would show that this is not just, um, a, a noise complaint, that there was like a real safety concern.
I mentioned that at a prior meeting, that the time I saw it happening, I could tell you what day and what time it was. I, there was a fire underneath the engine of the truck. As it was spinning around on Wollston and I'm like, I gotta get away from here, you know, there's gasoline in that vehicle. Um, and, but I didn't think to call nine-one-one. I just wanted to get away from there.
At the entrance to the transfer or the exit from the transfer station, you, there's big chunks of asphalt. On the ground, on the road from the burnouts.
And it's worth putting that in the newsletter, whatever post, that it's gonna cost all of us if this continues, so.
That there's a wildfire. What you observe.
That's right, if you started a fire. Uh, there, right. Okay, well, thank you for that update, although I'm sorry, um.
Again, I, I do not wanna come down on the Sheriff's Department. I'm going to give them the benefit of the doubt and, you know, we learned how, what's a proper way to file complaints.
We can do it now.
Yes.
We'll just do it.
Nine-one-one.
It was, was exactly cooperative spirit there. I mean, it was disappointing.
Yeah, and I will say, I mean, my, my email came in. With the assumption that they had a long log of complaints from this summer and then, so, you know, I, I, I own some of that as well.
If you just look at the row and you can tell what's been going on.
Right.
And then the videos very quick, you know, the videos made it, made me realize that it's even more dangerous than I expected.
It was very dangerous when I witnessed it. So next, um, issue on your report.
Um, so I just wanted to sort of highlight some of my communication with the Port Clyde General Store, um. Recently at a resilience committee meeting, um, one of the members had referenced. Some, um, something that he heard from Veronica and again, I just, which was not accurate, so I just wanna make sure that. What is actually playing out is, um, what folks understand. At this point, the original plans that were approved by the planning board are the only plans that we have on file for. The general store. Um, there had been conversation about, um, revoking the permits, um. And going before the planning board again to seek new permits. Uh, this would then. Reset their clock on their grandfather status, uh, you know, buying them more time to get a substantial start. Um, but per the request of Veronica's attorney, we did not revoke the permits, um. And so, uh, and I have not seen any new plans to, you know, Terry Brackett has heard, been in conversation with Will Gartley and has heard of plans. Um, that's only conversation. We have not seen them. And so. We can't say for certain that whatever changes they make will warrant a new permit because we haven't seen any plans. And so. I, you know, at this point, their, you know, timeline is up, um. I think it's early November this year.
It's not two days from the fire? September twenty?
It's when the, it's when the building permit was issued.
Yeah, so that, that stops the clock.
Okay.
So that's why if the permits were retracted, then the clock would start running again. So they'd have some more time, right? That, that clock.
Not if the permits were, were revoked. If a new permit was.
Issued before the two years is up.
Yeah.
Okay.
See, that's my concern is that. Everybody needs to know that if. If the current plans. Don't fit within the permit that they have and the time elapses. Then no one will ever be able to build anything there, neither they nor someone they might wanna sell the property to. So I really wanted Brandon to clarify for this group and for the public, whoever reads the minutes or. Watches the video that, you know, the onus is on, um, the Lindabean businesses. To ascertain with the planning board whether they need a different permit. Or whether this permit fits what they wanna do. And then it's up to them to start in time. You know, if they really want.
They will not be able to reach a substantial start by. The expiration date on their current permit, which is one of the main motivations for pursuing new plans and a new permit is to. Sort of get an extension.
Right, right, that's what I see.
So, uh, you know, they're at least.
But at this point, that has not been done and, and, you know, it sounded like. Um, you know, a resilience committee member had heard differently from Veronica, and so I just wanted to clarify that, um. On the record.
Wow.
And I reached out to Veronica last week to let her know. At this point, you know, we have not revoked your permits. You need, you'll need to go before the planning board again. And I did not hear back.
All right. Well, something's brewing.
Something's always brewing, wow.
But there is a hard stop there, so, yeah. Um, oh, we have some certificates of appointment.
Yes, a whole bunch.
Dear.
Um, that's just. Need to be signed Conservation Commission, Parks and Rec Committee, and the Resilience Committee.
All right, keep going on your report.
And then, just a reminder that the concert, um, at Fort Clyde Landing is Wednesday at six fifteen. That will launch the, uh, fundraising campaign for the Snows Point Lodge.
Right.
Um, and then the Makerspace Grand Opening is Thursday evening. So, big week.
Yeah, very big one.
That's all I have.
All right.
Lots of music.
So, let's get through the last of the select board policies and then. Celebrate that this will be done for another year. Yeah, you can sign those and I'll give you that. I think we, did we step on page thirty-seven to people remember?
Yeah, so we're picking up on thirty-eight.
So we're picking up on thirty-eight, which is the Fisherman's Memorial Policy, um. Do we know if this is, how this has been working? Because it says in here. That when there are new names to go on there, it's gonna come to the select board. But since I've been on the select board, nobody's brought new names to us.
But I thought it, I thought it then said like, but the committee could approve the new names.
But, but according to this, there isn't a committee.
I don't think there's been any new names for about two, three years.
Oh, okay.
One new name since I've been here and it was saying.
John.
My first, I think.
So who told you there was a name and how did it come to be put on the memorial?
Um, it was, I believe it was, um, the sixteen-year-old boy that had lost his life at sea.
Um, but who told you this? That his name should go on there?
It was, it was requests, I, I remember a request being submitted. Um, and writing, um. Um, the mom or the stepmom.
Is that the third date?
It did go before the select board, I believe.
Okay. All right, that, that's all. I wanna make sure that, that if there are names that people want added, they need to come here.
Why can't?
Fortunately, it's a good thing that those, that new names added or something.
Don't you feel like that should just be delegated? Do you guys want to retain that?
Well.
Process?
No.
No, but, so, yeah, so then, well, I guess the only thing I would wonder about is, um. When this memorial was created. Were there representations made about how things would be done that we should abide by?
Well, I thought there was that commit, I thought, I don't, I don't have my.
Right, there was a committee. And so, but it says in here, there, there was a committee and then the select board decided. We don't need a committee, that they could just bring it here. And so that's what was decided as of twenty fourteen. And I, too, am willing to, um. Delegate this to Brandon to just make it happen if there are names, unless. When this memorial fund was created, it said in there that like the select board was gonna be deciding something like that.
Select board has to sign off on the expense.
Well, right, but that's for everything. Pardon?
All the legwork could be done by Brandon.
Right.
Oh, anyway, I know.
Hopefully that won't be happening.
Right, yeah.
So do people feel like we could rescind this policy? Um. And delegate this responsibility?
authorize the town manager to handle it.
Okay, all right. Well, somebody make a motion to that effect.
I make a motion to that effect, whatever the words said to him. I authorized Brandon to be in charge of the. Any additional names to the Fisherman's Memorial.
Alan Baber, that's all five of us. Rescinded today, August eleven?
Yeah.
Okay. The next policy is the St. George Historical Society. Um, we have a vault with their stuff in it, it says. And is this how, how it works? That we keep their stuff there and it's not mixed up with any other stuff?
Well, there is stuff mixed up, um.
We keep west.
The, yeah, the, the library did come and pick up their stuff. The First Baptist Church has a couple of little boxes in there. Um, the Historical Society has stuff that's distinctly separate, but then there's another whole. Um, rack of shelving where some of it is Historical Society stuff and some of it's definitely stuff the town office should be keeping.
So I guess. I, I would just ask that maybe, and Tammy, since you're on the board of the Historical Society. If at some point, you know, in the next six months or whatever, you all. Can see if we are keeping things the way you would want there or, um. If you want them maintained differently, if you want to move them, just because there are. Statements in here about access shall be limited and. Only a member of the Historical Society should be allowed access to the vault. And since I've been in that room and it's been open. I'm pretty sure that's not what we're doing.
No, it's the, they're talking about the vault down here.
Oh, down hall.
Yeah.
Okay, it's not upstairs.
Right.
No.
Okay, it's four knocks.
I, I know where the key is.
So if, so if you, I, I just wanna make sure we're following the policy that we have.
Access is limited. They, you know, they would need to set up a time to, um. And we wouldn't let somebody in that was not part of the Historical Society or town staff.
I'm sorry, is there adequate space for the town backers that need to?
Now, the Historical Society had a lot of stuff in there. Um, I mean, that stuff started the whole middle of the floor. Um, they did come and get most of that.
Yeah, when we got, went into the library, we came and took everything out. Took it all to the library, took out everything that we wanted, reorganized everything. And then John had us bring. He was the president at the time and he had us bring back what is not needed to be stored here again.
I do think.
There's a very limited amount of stuff stored here now.
I do think it would be great, Tammy, I know that the Historical Society has plans to. Make the downstairs storage room, um, usable with a, you know, dehumidifier and whatever. And so if the rest, when that's done, if the rest of it could go over, that would be great. There are some other organizations that. The Youth and Scouting has, you know, tubs of china in the vault. Seriously, so.
Not even kidding.
We are trying to clean that up a bit because there is so much that we have to keep that space is a bit of a premium.
So, the next policy we need to review is called purchasing procedures. Um, and I just wanna check with Brandon. About whether this needs to be updated at all. Small purchases are things. Under a thousand dollars, intermediate, one thousand to ten. large, ten thousand to twenty-five, and then anything that's gonna be over twenty-five. Or a multi-year contract has to be approved by the select board. Is this how things work now? And you don't feel like this needs to be changed, these amounts?
No.
Great.
One thing that I, that was in there that I um, there are oftentimes where the bidding process is sort of cumbersome and I believe, I thought there was supposed to be language in there to allow uh us to stick with a so for example, Jimmy Calik is the only one that bids on our roads, and so if we are satisfied, uh, and you know, he's doing a good job, then to, to run through a formal bidding process is not a good use of his time or hours. It's just one thing to consider.
There, it, it does say that competitive bidding regs shall not be applicable. But I don't think you fall under one of.
Which is the professional services in the town.
That's, but this isn't professional services. I don't know. I thought professional services was generally like the legal or engineering.
Okay.
I don't know what um Brandon. I mean, that's something we could look at.
Um, so again, stepping aside as citizen, yeah, um, I used to work in government contract for thirty-five years. And my only comment to you would be that, while it may be cumbersome, in the long run, having competition is really, I think, in our best interest.
I agree, if we had it.
Okay.
You know what I mean, I, this is, you know, three years in a row now that he's the only contractor that bids on summer or winter roads.
Okay, it is just, in the long run, it's in our best interest to have somebody else, but if there isn't anybody.
Right.
Could we have language that said that competitive bidding may be waived if there is only one bidder?
You wouldn't know without running the bid process.
Yeah, I, and I think you're. I think it's legally required for governments. Um, so the next one is the treasurer's dispersment for warrants for employee wages and benefits. The one that's in the packet online has been replaced with one that we executed on June sixteenth this year, right after Brian's first meeting. So we have a new one that will replace that. That's also true for the one about treasurer's dispersments for municipal education class. We signed a new one on June sixteenth. And that's also true for paying state fees. Just the next ones. And um, then the one that's in the policy manual online that says dispersment warrants for utilities and local vendors, we rescinded that based on the advice of council last year. So that is gone. Um, so then the next one to look at is the general assistance voucher policy. Brandon is the general assistance administrator, but I think he delegates that to you, right?
No.
No. Okay, you are.
And he and Tara were both gonna try to act on my behalf if I was not available.
Yeah, it says or designate.
It, yeah, it, it's, it's a huge job really as far as the volume of information we need to know. And I, I don't know why the state doesn't just make it part of their job, it's their program. They just tell the towns that they have to do it, just have us pay a tax and.
But we are following the policy that we have.
Yes, we are.
All right. And the next one is sale or disposal of personal property, which we don't have very often.
This doesn't mean real estate.
No, this is stuff like pairs and. So um, in the property tax payment policy, it says that payments are made, applied first to the oldest amount due, and you're following that. So then the next one is the general fund, fund ban, balance policy, page fifty-three. And I'm gonna wait for Brandon to get back because I do. So talking about the general fund, fund balance policy, it, it lists five classifications um, of funds, things that are non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, or unassigned. And, and it says we should be getting um, reports that designate things like that, but the select board doesn't see things labeled in this way.
The cuts reported for the budget committing. The, the general fund expenses, um, they the reserve accounts, I do I do present those balances. But that's all reviewed by the budget committing.
And we are um, unassigned fund balance appropriate level is two months, is that the, what we've adopted?
That's, that's a policy that's been adopted, yes.
So then, in this section on page fifty-four about the policy, it says that before the end of the fiscal year, we're supposed to assign and estimate the amounts in encumbrances, budget appropriations, and a capital budget. I'm not sure, do we see a report that breaks things down like that?
We don't have a capital budget.
Right. We're working on that.
It's, it's just a, it's just a general fund, um general fund budget, and we're, we're so far behind on our audits. Um, I mean, undesignedated fund balance would be an unaudited number.
But it says.
It may be better than no number at all.
Right, it says the treasurer will provide the estimated fund balances to make, assign things into these buckets, so, you know, I was just looking at this policy and one of the others where we're supposed to be getting reports in a way that I'm not, I, we don't categorize things this way. I mean, you have this information, you're.
All the reserve accounts, those are set aside and separate.
Right, we're coming to those policies after this. This one is all related to money that's in the general fund, but there are these buckets where we something is restricted, something's committed, something's assigned or unassigned, something we can't spend, right?
We do not budget like that. It's basically that there's the budget. We don't have a capital budget, we, it, it's just all states.
Right, but you, you must know if some of the money in the general fund could not be spent. It has to be kept for a specific purpose.
Those are the, those are the reserve accounts.
And they're not in the general.
They're not in the general fund, they're in a separate bank account. And they all have their separate balances. Um, it may be helpful for me to do a statement um, and show you a report of the fund balances for the reserve accounts. Because those are the ones you can't touch. They've actually, rather than report it as part of the general fund and this is what you can't touch, they've taken it right out and separated, okay, this is money you can't touch, this is what you're working with. So they, they've separated it into two completely separate bank accounts, two completely separate budget, buckets of money so that you're not looking at one bucket of money and this is, this amount you can't touch. The money you can't touch is just over here, you're only looking at what you can touch.
Is the only time it's touched is when after town meeting we agreed to move X amount to lower the budget, is that the only time it's touched? Every year?
The general fund?
The, the reserve?
That.
No, that was something.
Money in, out of the reserve, that.
Okay. Okay.
So, something different, that's basically the um, budget did not used to be run the way Rick did it, and Brandon's running it a lot the way Rick did. So that there's not much left over at the end, you know, if there's any difference, that difference is much smaller.
Right.
Whereas before, there'd be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more in revenue than what they spent, so then they would say, okay, we're going to take a hundred and fifty thousand, or we're taking a hundred thousand dollars out of the undesignedated fund balance um, to pay for this year's expenses. That way, the undesignedated fund balance didn't just keep growing.
Right, but we're, we're doing that, aren't we? Cause I always remember.
We did not do it this year.
We didn't, okay, cause I remember voting for.
Last year.
Yeah, we did, this, this was the first year we've been here.
First year we didn't.
We did it all three years that Rick was here. Um, we stopped doing it this year because we kept pulling from it, um, but the budget, the budgeting was so much tighter that the fund wasn't growing to match it.
We were pulling more from the undesignedated fund balance than what we were actually adding to it.
Oh, okay.
So we were maybe adding sixty-eight thousand dollars to it, but then they were pulling a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from it.
Okay.
Two hundred even, some.
Okay, that's what I remember then, yeah.
And it, it, the town, it's what I think if we want, if we are concerned with the tax rate, we need to do it in the budget, not by pulling from the uh undesignedated fund, because we've now gotten ourself into a position where if we have, at times, the year, real cash flow problems because of this. And, and the, and what the amount sort of trickles down to by the time it's spread across every taxpayer, it, it makes a much bigger hit out of the general fund, having two hundred thousand less than it does on any individual's tax.
All right, then.
But, so you get an estimated amount of the general fund every time you sign a.
Yes, I know that, but we never see one that has these categories that are in this policy, so.
I think that should come from, you know, when the budget committee gives you their report after doing their Q four review or.
Well, that's what I was thinking, this, for this policy and some that are coming up after this, that um, maybe we just, at the quarterly review, we should be including them in these categories that are in the policy. So, the next policy is credit and debit card acceptance policy, which says the town will accept credit and debit card transactions as a method of payment for property taxes, fines, charges, blah, blah, blah. And are we doing that? We are accepting credit cards for people.
Who is our vendor? Who is our?
The state.
Oh, okay, okay.
We are working on bringing that in-house.
Okay, all right.
Um, so like right now, for example, we can't accept credit cards for donations to the fundraising campaign, which is really inconvenient. And which means that we we would need the state to then set up a system for us to do it. And so we, it's been over two months of trying to get them to set up uh so that we can accept credit cards for building permits. And so, uh, we, we're just looking to bring it in-house so that we can do it much more quickly.
Yeah, well, some of the vendors, I mean, I'm sure you've read the stories too, some of the vendors are not performing well. That, and there's been hiccups and glitches, and the payments haven't been recorded, like Rock City lost twenty-nine thousand dollars. Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, and that puts them in a position of writing to customers from a year ago and saying, like, you bought coffee a year ago, we weren't paid for it, could you please pay us? Yeah. Yeah, so I just, I mean, when you get to that point, I'm sure you'll know that there's a couple that have a lot of issues.
Does the MMA have a resource for that, maybe?
I have reached out to um the bank that we do. And um, I, and I told them if they cannot match the state's price so that the taxpayers aren't paying more.
Right.
We stay with the state because we're not gonna.
Right.
Have the taxes.
Right, you're not gonna lose money. Yeah, right.
So the next um policy is called Town Fund Investment Policy, which we um also updated last year, so the one that you, if you looked at what's on the website, that's already um, gone, but um in this policy, it, under delegation of authority, um, the investment delegation is made to the town treasurer, which is Brandon. And it says the town treasurer shall establish written procedures for the operation of the investment program consistent with this investment policy. Do we have written um, procedures for our investment? Do we know?
I mean, the, only whatever the, the bank has, and they gave us a presentation on that.
Yeah, it's what we sign with the bank.
Okay, so they came.
About risk level.
Right.
Yeah.
They came last, uh, beginning of December last year, and I thought we should have them come back and do that sometime this year.
They're just happy to do that.
Yeah.
Because it's public money and we need to make sure it's being invested appropriately. And it also, it says that we should be seeing quarterly re, the select board should be seeing quarterly reports of investments, which we don't. So, we should just, um, if you could start providing those with the finance stuff, Irene, that'd be great. Um, and the one thing that we changed last year was that we would um invite the manager of our investments to come once a year, so that, that was the new thing in there. Trust Fund Investment Policy. Now, you, did you and Suzie go over this?
Um, we had a discussion that after a couple more meetings, maybe in September, Suzie, Irene and I are gonna meet and look at all the trust policies.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, I would say then we should defer any changes to that time. Because that too says we're supposed to get quarterly reports and we don't. Um, so then the next one would be page sixty-seven, the Public Land Acquisition Policy, which we updated last year, so this one has been rescinded and replaced as of August twenty twenty-four. Do people feel like that one needs any more changes or revisiting?
Not right.
I just sent that, poor Brian, I've never seen that, and I think I sent it at like ten after five, so you may not have seen that um, policy that we adopted last year about that. The harassment policy, does anybody have any comment they wanna make about that? It looks fine.
Yeah.
Why does a select board have a streetlight policy is what I want to know.
When they were new, it was a hot topic.
Three years ago.
Right, right.
Why, oh, so that's why September twenty-two.
Yeah.
So what was the top, why is this telling me?
Well, lights are always a hot topic. That's right, that's right.
The windows didn't want it, and other people on the stage that were further away and it wasn't shining in their windows, well, they were adamant they had to have it.
So, I guess if somebody wants. I guess if somebody wants to put in a streetlight or remove a streetlight, they have to come to the select board. I I had not realized this until. They're reviewing these. I think there's anything to say about private roads becoming blah, blah, blah. Winter sand policy.
What private roads becoming reopened?
Um.
Becoming public.
Becoming public roads. That there's a process that you have to follow if that's gonna hap- if somebody. Um.
Hasn't come up in the past few years.
It may.
Yeah, yeah.
So then just realize there's a policy and we'd have to follow it. If the town is going to accept a privately owned road as a town road.
Hmm.
You've heard of some that might come up.
Like post office heard and Sprucehead is an example. Um, right now, uh. One, you know, one resident owns it, um, but it's a paved road that has, you know, a public right of way.
And a federal bill.
Right.
Service there.
Right, well, the road itself is its own lot, and so technically. When it's time to repave that road, it would be on that resident to do so.
Uh.
Even though.
Hmm.
You know, many people, the public use it and only for that service, so.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Alright, well, we will. Try to remember that we have a policy when it comes up.
Right.
Winter sand policy. Sand will be made available. To local contractors. At the sand shed for their use. Do we do that?
Hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Don't smoke at the transfer station as long.
Oh, shoot.
Alright. I think we're done with these. Hooray. So I will um. Give all the updated policies to the appropriate people so we have what we have.
Yes.
We get it all updated for all of us and on the website and. Our public records. Um, where's the agenda?
Committee reports.
Committee reports, planning board.
Um, the planning board has not met um since the meeting about the Breeden Pier. And there's been guidance by Bill Kelly regarding um some analysis that has to go along with. Um, number five. Review of site characteristics to make sure that. The permit application puts forth. A project that is in the right context, the right view shed for the particular. Um, placement of the pier. Um, and Bill Kelly not only sent a letter, but he sent some cases. And the planning board is in the process of reviewing that information. The pier will not come back to the planning, the pier application will not come back to the planning board until. I don't think it's something like September twenty third, and because there's. Um, because there's an ordinance that if. No decision is made in thirty five days, it automatically is approved. The Breedons waived that aspect of the permit application process. So everybody's gonna be back here reviewing the permit application again at the end of September. And there was no other pending application, so tomorrow night's meeting is canceled.
And was the town attorney's advice shared with them?
It was.
Okay, so they're, they can respond to that.
It was.
Was part of why. They had asked for the meeting to be in September, that way they had timed it.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah. Okay, thank you. Board of Appeals.
Um, that. Um, organizational meeting is August twenty eighth. I'm gonna try to go, I don't know what's gonna happen to my guests, they're gonna be in Portland, I don't know, but I'm gonna try to go.
Can you do it? Can you just call in and ask?
I'm picking people up and I don't have in my truck, I don't have real Bluetooth, so it's a problem. Anyway, I'm gonna just go. We'll see what happens, so, yeah.
Um, the Harvard committee.
They've not met.
Um, Budget Committee has not met since we've met Cemetery.
Um, they met um August seventh here at the town office. They did um elect a new chair and Rob will stay on. Um, Patty Sinclair is now the new chair and Rob. Burglin.
Backline, he was something, I'm not sure how.
He will be on as, stay on as the secretary. And the committee is working on how best to spend their new budget money. And then the top of the list was the trees and. Then um Dawn met Sexton, um Dawn met with Walter Guttel from the Old Cemetery Association. And they did a tour of seaside and they talked a lot about um stone restoration. And Walter Guttel, who's came down from Augusta, pointed out that there are some large stones that have. Unglued from their base and he went up to one and Dawn said he could just slide it right back and forth. If a child or anybody was to run through the cemetery and accidentally push on this stone, it would fall over. And God knows what would have happened, so. They're looking at that being their top priority at this point to get those stones. Re-cemented to the basis so they do not tip over and. God knows what would happen. Um, they need to repeat, no, I don't need to say that. Um, they asked that I bring some items to the select board. And one of the items is they're recommending that the regular eight hundred dollar fee for burial sites be. Multiplied by three for non pa- taxpayers who would come in and wanna buy a burial plot. There at the cemetery.
Hmm, so.
They're having a lot of. Summer residents, I guess, of people that think St. George is their, the non taxpayers.
Well.
Pay, summer residents pay taxes here.
Well, I know either people that just love St. George and when they pass away, they wanna be buried here, but they don't really have any connection to it.
Okay, so. My thinking is if they, if the. Chair of the cemetery committee wants to come to us with a recommendation.
Okay.
About um grave prices, they should do that and they should bring their um. Their reasoning.
Hmm.
Um, which, you know, obviously you said some of that, but I I think it would also be helpful. To bring comparison information from other towns, like what do they charge for? We're talking about plot prices, right?
Right, yeah.
Um.
Why can't Tammy bring it to the board as the liaison?
Well, she can, but.
Won't go back to them and they need to make an official document. They just wanted me to make you aware that they would like to do something different for non taxpayers.
The two-tiered system.
I don't think that's the right term.
No.
Well, they had a different name for it, but Dawn couldn't remember what they said. Non.
Residents?
No.
Yeah, but.
No.
But anybody who's a property owner in the town is one category.
Obvious, right.
So you've got. Property, St. George property owners and then non-St. George property owners, right?
Well, they're just people that have come to St. George and they've come to Dawn and asked about. Being buried there and also asked about green burials there. And they would. It might be somebody from Camden or, and they've come down here and they've. Toward the cemetery and it's just lovely and they wanna go there when they pass. But. Because there also is starting to be limited space there. Where they're dealing with the um sea level rise issues down at the lower portion of the cemetery and it's wet down there that. They need, they think, they need to think about residents and taxpayers of the town first.
Right.
So they're thinking if they raise these fees. A bit higher for non-involved people, I guess you have that.
I mean, there could be long-term renters. Who are from this town. Would you charge them a different fee? Cause they're not taxpayers per se. Or they're long-term renters.
If they live here, they're paying taxes here. They may not pay property taxes, but they pay other taxes.
Well, what if they don't have a car? What if they don't have a car or a boat?
Or a dog.
Yeah, or a dog, right. I'm just saying that you have to be careful with these categories, right?
Sensing of rent.
Yeah, yeah.
For generations.
Right.
I'll just ask to bring it to this line board that they're thinking of.
And and the thing that I I. Couple other things I wanna say about what you've said so far. One is. There's, we, the select board has yet to adopt any. Policy for the cemetery, and so.
And they're working on those also, working on policies.
We, we should be the ones that adopt whatever Dawn is charging. She is charging people today. To buy a plot, but the select board has never authorized that number, whatever it is. We need to hear. From them and approve the numbers because.
It's never been authorized?
No, not, I I don't think since we bought the. Acquired the cemetery. Oh boy. The select board has never um.
What year did we acquire the cemetery?
It's like eight years ago. This was why I wanted the committee to get reactivated and start. You know, adopting these policies because Jerry Hall had a whole draft of. Policies from twenty seventeen or eighteen.
Hmm.
Uh, so. Um.
We reviewed all the minutes from that far back to know that that select board never adopted the.
They weren't on the website, so I don't know how, I never went looking in person for them.
Oh, I'm just saying, we don't know whether or not this fee was ever adopted by the select one.
We don't, but I'd I'd be amazed because nothing else.
That's fine, but if we're gonna speculate.
Right, okay, right, you're right.
Oh, anyway, then obviously they need to work, they're working on the policies and budgets and things and. This is just an idea that they've come up with because of limited space and they'd like to. Keep it for local residents. And they were, asked me to ask if there are any updates related to Clark Hill.
Um.
I said I didn't think so, but I would ask.
Well, uh, yes, actually that property is no longer tax acquired.
That's the one they paid up.
Hmm.
Really?
Um.
And so. Which means that the, you know, town has a, you know. Good, currently a good relationship with the resident, you know, the property owner, you know, he may be. If the town was interested in taking Clark Hill on. As a town-owned cemetery, you know, he he may be receptive to that.
But why would we do that? It's full, so we would just be taking on mowing something we don't own now.
Right, exactly. Because some people would argue that it's the right thing to do to make sure that the folks that are buried there have, you know, a. A high level of care, you know, moving forward.
Wasn't there some issue about the perimeter? Was there some some subsidence or something about?
The issue was that it's in the middle of a what was formerly tax-acquired lot, like a fifty-acre lot.
Okay.
And this was in the middle of it, so we were trying to figure out, well. How do we retain it if uh? If this sells.
Hmm.
I don't know why we wanted to do it then, but clearly at some point we did because that conversation was brought up several times.
But anyway, the the. The town doesn't own it now. They've paid up on their taxes, so yeah, I mean.
Um, it came up. Because years ago, when the current owner's father was still alive and running a gravel pit up behind the cemetery. He dug out too much gravel almost covering cabins.
Oh, my god.
Yeah, that's what I remember, yeah, there are that, yeah, so like the corners were appearing that.
There was, there was, there was a lot of concern about her, plus they had to, he had to stop work immediately and then.
Yeah.
Backfill and.
Hmm.
So that. There was, I think that was the underlying concern was to.
How long ago was that?
That's a good word for an underlying.
How long ago is that, Irene?
Oh, a long time.
Um, that was probably.
I don't think.
I wanna say. Oh, it would have been before you were born, I think.
I don't know, I don't think that is the reason for.
It's happened a lot, but yeah.
Some conversation about why the town was required.
That was mentioned at a select board meeting by a select board member as they wanted. They wanted to make sure nothing like that happened again.
So Tammy, I also just wanna say, you know, we had this whole orientation earlier. The cemetery committee is not in charge of spending the budget set aside for the cemetery.
Their budget, the ten thousand dollars?
It's the town's budget for that department.
But I know that little bit has been cut out and given to this committee, then all.
No, they think that, but that is incorrect.
No, the budget isn't given to any committees in any department.
It's.
It'll make him. Just like the Harvard committee doesn't have the budget for, that's Ryan Klein and Brandon's job. But Dawn is the employee of the town that runs the cemetery and reports to Tara. That group of people is not the group spending that money.
So they're not allowed to spend the money then?
Well, it's not their job to spend the money.
Well, that, the other piece is that. I think. The Sexton almost acts a bit more like a committee member rather than a staff member during their meetings, and so that can sort of muddy the waters. Um.
She's aware that she can't make any decisions or vote or do anything. She always points that out at meetings that.
Yeah.
She realizes that she's just there as a liaison from the cemetery.
And, you know, if. I think that she can use them as a resource, that's what committees are for, right? If she wanted to seek their opinions and their advice and, you know, but at the end of the day. The decision would rest with her and Tara.
She, there's. Dawn and Tara are the ones in charge of deciding how to spend that ten thousand dollars for the coming year.
But they take advice from the committee.
They could.
Well, they can, yeah, but they don't have to.
Well, they don't discuss it and vote on what they'd like to see happen and then. Dawn and Tara.
No, they, no.
No.
No, that's interesting.
If she, if Dawn would like their advice and, you know, in terms of like. That they're invested members, right? What do they consider some of the top priorities so that she can then go help deliver on them? That, that's one thing. But they don't really get to say how the ten thousand is spent. That's a staff, that's a staff issue.
That's why I keep saying what we need from them is policies and procedures about the cemetery. We need to, we need their recommendation and advice about how much we should be charging, you know, um. Other policies like the green burial idea was, is that gonna work or not work? And then they come to the select board and say. We, we think we should do this here or we don't. Um. You know, you're the liaison to the solid waste committee. That committee isn't sitting around saying. We should spend this much on tipping fees or whatever. I mean, there are conversations if. The contractor is gonna go, you know, charge more.
It's not because, you know, that department hasn't itemized budget, right? So it's very obvious where their money's going. The cemetery. Committee, you know, cemetery department does not, they have a lump sum of ten thousand dollars for cemetery maintenance. So how to prioritize the projects because there's more than ten thousand dollars worth of work needed, which they discussed, you know? They can deliberate and make suggestions, I think, but at the end of the day, that will come, that will come down to Dawn and Tara.
And they will not be voting, you know, this is how it's gonna be spent.
The only thing they should be focusing on is policy and procedures.
And and suggestions about priorities.
Well, this has been a whole big.
Well, they were here.
Happy to come to a meeting too to like help.
You probably.
Clarify.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, because there's some really strong people on that committee this.
Randy?
We went through this last year about um. About what money was gonna be spent on maintenance and mowing. And they wanted like an additional, they wanted the town to include that in a different budget. And they wanted their budgetary amount to be just for what they wanted to do, and I remember we went through this last year about. Their budget.
But but you need to explain to them that other committees don't have that either.
It's town.
You know, the emergency services committee doesn't have any say in what what we're doing with the ambulances or. You know, equipment for firefighters, they're not.
What they could do is say, you know, I think our department is either, you know. Much too large for the size of the town or underfunded for the size of our town, and we're gonna compare it to other towns to justify that or not. You know, um. But not, you know, how how each dollar is spent.
Okay, so anyway, um, that was.
Okay, so anyway, um, there was an issue with the Sext- Sexton budgeted salary increase. I was asked to bring that forward, but that has been taken care of with Tara, so we don't need to worry about that. And the final thing is the town a member of the Old Cemetery Committee Association. The Old Cemetery Association.
I've never seen anything from them, Irene, have you?
We should be though.
So, cause it, one year is ten dollars, five years is forty dollars and a lifetime membership is two hundred and fifty dollars. So I will bring that, and finally, they're continuing to. Do research on green burials and they've had a few people come. Dawn has had a few people come to her and ask if they could have green burials there, of course she has to tell them. That no, we're not set up for that and we're doing research to see if it's something eventually the town will wanna do.
So other things they could be helpful about are record-keeping, mapping options. You know, those big picture um. Projects. Where they can make it, you know, a recommendation to the select board that. You know, we think in next year's budget, this kind of mapping software would be helpful to Dawn into the town. Or record-keeping system or something. Instead of getting into. Particular trees and shrubs and gravestones and that's the stuff that.
Well, they're concerned about the trees because they had a huge limb come down and they're afraid that. Eventually the tree's gonna come down and fall across gravestones and cause a lot of damage and then.
So when you hear him talking like that, you should say that's Dawn's responsibility, she will take care of dealing with the tree thing.
We got a quote from Hoppy and he's, he was supposed to come and lay here, I think he was just behind or forgot about it.
Okay.
That was a lively report, Tammy.
So, Emergency Services hasn't met, TIF is on pause. Comprehensive Plan Committee, John is still sitting here, um. I mentioned two weeks ago, the good news that the state approved it. Um, and they did not require any changes. But they had circulated, which is required in the process. Our draft plan with a number of other state agencies. So Inland Fish and Wildlife Department Transportation. And we have individual letters from some of these departments. That even though we're in compliance with all the requirements, there were some recommendations um, for like fine-tuning. I would say the one that was the most substantive related to water quality. And steps they recommended that we take to um, ensure water quality, so. Two weeks from tonight, we'll um, bring to you the proposed final. For final approval version that then will be, we'll set a public hearing date. And and a, and a date for a special town meeting for approval and. Um, John will come and highlight the, the minor changes and then the water quality change. Um, and one other thing that I'd forgotten was in the comprehensive plan was that they recommended. Um, must have been DMR, that we do a harbor and mooring plan, which I guess Ryan already wanted to do. Um, but I was thinking um, that I'll send Dave Schmanska, I'll send the committee chairs. The letters from these departments that I got that are relevant to them, so I can send the one to the Harbor Committee can. Um. Work with Ryan on. On that and these other things will be similar. But was there anything else we should say about that?
No, but our goal will be to um, keep the changes to a minimum. You won't see any significant changes, the plan. Because for all practical purposes, we've meant to require.
Very complimentary letter from the state.
Very nice.
Um, Conservation Commission.
Okay, well, I didn't bring my notes, but they did meet last week and they talked about trails, um. Still working on the Old Woods property and getting the agreements, the legal agreements all settled, but it will happen. And um.
It's being held up by LMF's lawyer.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, not that they're dragging their feet, right, so. LMF is the state, who knows if they're understaffed or. Going, going camping, but anyway, um, they also, the state did finally come through with a historical plaque for Ford Point. Which is far more accurate than the erroneous one that used to be there. Of course, it has a typo in it and it's all done, but it was just them. It was the word no that should have been known within and on it and and. And Ken just said, let's not even bring it up because it'll be months to get another plaque, it doesn't. You can tell what's, what's intended when you read it. Um, so that's that, um, in- interesting that uh, the Conservation Commission was asked to possibly. Way in on the peer proposal um, that 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 referenced from the, from the planning board. Uh, near Driftin Beach and the sort of general consensus was this really isn't our job to, to, you know, we. We're more concerned with conservation issues and that isn't a conservation issue exactly.
Well, I'm not entirely sure that I agree because as we were pointing out. It's, all the committees have a responsibility to advance the policies in the comprehensive plan and. Open space and this dozen things. I don't know, maybe that is more a planning board thing, but certainly if. If conserving a view, some people would argue. Um, you know, so whichever committee.
That was part of the discussion, but I think they were just to, I was just saying in general, there was a sense that they weren't gonna offer a.
I don't, I don't think that the ask was necessarily uh, fair for the Conservation Commission because it's not like they had been asked. Previously to ever do sort of a landscape survey of the town and what areas.
It came out of the blue.
Didn't care or were concerned, they just, that was, they felt that was the role of the conservation.
If it's going to be done, I don't think that it should be done in response to a specific uh, permit either. It should be done without any of those influences.
No, that makes sense to have, if we're gonna have a list of, these are scenic vistas in town. Which there are some things like that in the comprehensive plan already. Um, and I don't know, maybe Erin could provide those to the planning board.
I have to share it with them.
You did, okay. All right, so that's been taken care of then, good.
So that's about it.
Great. Sh- um, Shellfish Committee?
They're not meeting this month.
Okay, Solid Waste?
They meet August twentieth.
Um, Parks and Rec?
Uh, they met last Tuesday. Uh, they elected their officers, Son Award is chairman and Shawna Tolman, a new secretary. Uh, the scoreboards that the boosters bought are, have been delivered to the school, they're sitting there waiting to be hooked up. Uh, she's got Simpsons Electric, I think, is gonna, hopefully they'll be in before school starts, they'll have brand new scoreboards in the J. Uh, and again, that's all paid by boosters through donations, so. Nothing came out of the budget, um. They did a quick Saint George Day's recap, it's basically everything we talked about before is. They're not sure where they're gonna land with concessions and stuff next year, but I think they've got some ideas and that's one of their goals this year is to. Focus on that. Um, they're adding, there's been a good call for. Uh, younger kids programs, so they're adding a three-to-five-year-old soccer program through the school with Jess Berry.
That'll be entertaining.
Jess Berry is, says she can run it, uh, so it's gonna be kinda sponsored through Parks and Rec, but they're gonna be running it at school.
I think that's another great example of um, sort of like roles of committees and staff and whatnot, you know, you, you know. The committee can share with Ashley that, you know, we've heard this request in the community. You know, and ultimately it will come down to whether or not Ashley has the capacity to do it this year or that's been identified as a priority inside.
And her being able to work with this pool is huge because she really doesn't have time to run that program herself. And finding volunteers to run that program is not easy.
That takes more time than running a program typically.
Part of why we don't have it now. Uh, and the rest of it was basically talking about the youth and scouting building and, you know, what they wanna do with it. And I told them that they needed to come up with a list of some ideas of programming and, I mean, they've got. They, they wanna focus on adult programming. More so than they have in the past for seniors and, you know, middle-aged people. Uh, they really did everywhere from yoga to ballet classes to cooking classes, uh. Movie nights, disco, of course, and one thing, um. Ashley would like to do is an equipment rental program to be free, but, you know, I have an equipment closet, so if somebody wants to try. Eating or something, they can come borrow it and take it out and. And actually, I think Summer found a company that helps you set that kinda stuff up, so she's gonna be looking into that.
And sort of be like the canoe and kayak.
Yeah, it'll be free, it'll be donated stuff, um, but if, you know, so you don't have to go buy the.
So again, I would just say that, you know. Trying to keep everybody in their lane, you know. That Ashley runs the Parks and Rec Department for the town and they're advisory and helpful. To be advancing the goals that have come from the select board and the community, um. But they shouldn't separately be running programs, she runs programs.
Summer just found a good company that helps you set it up, so Ashley's looking into it. Um, and they set their new meeting schedule, they didn't pick the dates, but it's gonna be the second Tuesday of the month at six o'clock.
Did they, was there any discussion of the canoe and kayak rack on the marsh and?
They just talked about it briefly, they, you know, said it's been going really well.
That's what I'd heard.
And she said she's had to wash some mud off them, so they're obviously being used and.
I've seen people out there using.
Yeah, I've heard it, I've heard people say they went and did.
Good things and I, I forgot to mention that Conservation Commission or some members of it did. Go all the way across to the other side to the six acre. parcel and, and scouted it out, checked it out and thought that it, there was an area there that's a pretty good landing spot and you could. Um, you know, maybe have a bench or maybe eventually a picnic table. Big decisions about it, but that sounds like an interesting potential.
Well, good. Thanks. Resilience.
Insilience has two separate tracks going, um, the. Committee met on August seventh as the kickoff meeting for Sebago Techniques. Um, Cold Storage and Factory Roads, uh, Coastal Resilience Project. And so the team came and presented a draft project schedule. And there was a lot of discussion about what community engagement is gonna look like for this particular project. Um, separately, there's the project going on in conjunction with South Thomason. The Climate Action Plan and that meets every two weeks on a Friday at four thirty. And um, there's discussions ongoing about how community engagement is going to look. For that particular project and there's a meeting this Friday for that.
All right then, while we went over time, but. I believe I'm so glad we're done with the select board policies. Our meetings will be back to more normal um, next time and. Uh, I'm trying to remember, other than the comprehensive plan, I'm not remembering what we have on, but um.
Carry forward the sex movie.
Oh, carry forward money, okay, um, so shall we adjourn? I'll entertain a motion. Okay, I made a motion. All in favor? That's everybody. Thank you, everybody.